Calling the August fifteenth meeting of the planning commission to order at seven oh. And thank you very much for coming on a lovely summer evening. Just to go over the agenda, tonight we have time for public comment, review our minute, we approve our minutes from August first. Talk about the latest, most current version of the town plan. Also known as version two. And then we'll have some public comment related to that discussion. Then we will determine if we are ready to basically begin the adoption process, which would be step one of a very long process, which we will review a little bit as well. If we have time, we can hear from planning commission members about anything more to share. Other business, I have a couple of items, then we'll wrap up and then for our next meetings. If anybody has any changes that they would like to adjust for the agenda. Okay. Um, so the next item is public comment. So welcome. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share with the planning commission at this time? Okay. So then we'll move on to number four, do you have a motion to approve the minutes from August first? Would you approve the one with Selena? Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Wendy, thank you. Do we have any corrections for the minute? Okay, so we'll approve, vote to approve the minutes. If you're in favor of approving minutes, vote. On.
On.
Any needs? Extensions? Okay, so we've approved the minutes. Uh, then the main bulk of the topic is going to discuss the most recent version of the town plan. And kind of interested in hearing from people about structuring, even structuring the discussion. Since it, we will allocate most of the time. Um, so the first thing I would like to do is just set everybody in within the timeline of where we are. So if Selena, if you could show the first document that had, that's called the work plan. And this is a document that we've looked at before. But it's been updated with our, as we've gone along with our activities. Just sort of like a GPS waypoint in our, in our activity here. So the top part of it is grayed out because those are activities that we've already done. It's not absolutely everything, but it's like the primary activities. But for tonight's conversation, just to remind people that the version one draft was published and posted to the website on July thirteenth. And we discussed it as planning commission on, at our meeting on July eighteenth. And since then, we've received feedback, I've received emails from people, phone calls from people, I know Linda has received feedback. And then we formally invited the town committees to deliver us feedback on August first, which we heard. And as a result of all of that conversation, David White, our consultant, produced a version two draft. And that's where we are today, August fifteenth. Based on the schedule, if you go all the way to the bottom of the chart of needing the select board, or the target is for the select board to adopt a new plan by December twenty first. Working our way backward through all the various requirements for hearings and notice and publications in the newspapers. That brings us to today, where it would be, um, the expectation, when Linda and David and I laid out this schedule a few weeks back, when we, but actually at the beginning of the project, and then it's been updated a few times. Would be if we, um, if the planning commission warns a public hearing, if we vote tonight and approve basically receipt of the draft. We're not approving the draft and saying it's fabulous, it's perfect, we love it, here it is, we're all like, we're all done. What we're basically saying is that it's getting closer and we're ready to really alert people that we have some really solid material that we'd like people to review and respond to. So if we do that today, then we hit all these various notice requirements and then ensuing would be continued discussion of this draft at our September fifth meeting, also at the farmer's market. And potentially if we wanted to do any other public engagement activities, all the way up until right before our October third meeting. And at our, so then October third, just prior to October third, David and the planning commission would work together to produce a version three. And hopefully by that point, the document, we're confident enough in the document that we are forwarding it to the select board for their consideration. Not to say it's done, it's perfect, it's fabulous, but we're saying like, consider this as a plan. And then they hold these public hearings. And the document can continue to be refined and edited and updated all the way until December fifth. Or December sixth, depending on how you count the days, which is fifteen days prior to December twenty first. So we still have a lot of work to do. And the way the process is defined by statute is designed to be iterative with checkpoints along the way and different hearings along the way. And the expectation is that the document will continue to evolve as we incorporate stuff we forgot, or stuff we thought of, or new ideas that people bring to the table, or reviews from the committees and, you know, like the conservation committee is still working on, they're waiting for input from their consultant. And we're waiting for input on the village wastewater study. As those things come to being more finalized, they can be incorporated into the document. Up until basically, I'm in my mind, I'm thinking Thanksgiving, I'd like to be sort of like really, really hot to try, like Thanksgiving. Um, so that's sort of our GPS waypoint is where we are today on August fifteenth. If for some reason, these dates are not hit, because we're not ready, or, um, we want to rework something, then we would have to come up with another plan B. And in my mind, plan B would most likely be requesting additional special planning commission meetings and or select board meetings, so that, you know, we needed an additional week. But I want to feel like we have our backup against the wall. Um, but I also want to leverage this, the schedule and the sense of urgency and say like, you know, it's never going to be perfect, it's never going to be done. Um, but I think this is a very ambitious group, which is why I love working with the group. And I think that we have set high standards for ourselves. And I am committed to delivering a really fantastic plan, but I know it won't be perfect. So that's basically where we are. Does anybody have any questions about this tentative scheduling?
When's our statutory end date?
January fourth is when the plan expires. And December twenty first is the last select board meeting prior to the expiration. I mean, the sky's not going to fall down if the plan expires, but I personally, I do not want to oversee that result.
No, I, I don't either. I just wanted to know when that date.
Yeah, so that's.
Assume that if the plan is expired, then everything based on the plan becomes open to misinterpretation by adventurous.
Not the zoning.
Yeah, the zoning, which is stayed in.
The zoning phase.
Yeah.
Uh, at two fifty hearings, public service hearing, projects and grant applications.
Continue with this.
No, they would stop.
They would stop.
Yeah.
Right.
There's a financial.
Okay, another question about the schedule.
No.
Okay. Yep. Okay, so then the next thing is just to give you a picture that, um, of the version A, because I feel like I finally got this recently, where I'm more used to like an iterative process, where you just make changes, 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 changes. But because of this process, we actually need the document to be fixed at a point in time and then change it, and then fix it at a point in time, and then change it, so that people have, don't have a moving, like, it's okay for us to have a moving target, because we're talking about and thinking about it all the time, but it's not fair to the public. So the public needs to know what is a rely, what is a document that they can rely on to provide feedback. Okay, so what this is showing is the draft, the case, we got all, the top is all the input we've gotten from the public, the PC members, all our research, all our plans, other committees fed into the draft. The version one was produced on July eighteenth. We collected edits, David produced for us a version two as of August fifteenth, which is today. And even though we have a hearing on September nineteenth, we're anticipating a version three for October third. So the work of developing version three starts tonight. The call of the hearing is another opportunity to collect feedback on version two. And feedback that we hear on September nineteenth will be incorporated into version three. If it's new, if it's different, if it's something that the, that the PC wants incorporated. And then eventually we hand it off to the select board, but we will be with them every step of the way as they go through their hearings and go through that process.
So I, I thought I didn't have any questions about the schedule, but it turns out I do.
Okay.
Um, so, um, ver, uh, October third is the publication date.
October third is our PC meeting date.
Okay.
So the actual document needs, goes to the planning commission and the website the Friday before that meeting, which I think that was the September twenty eighth. But to make it look really sweet and pretty, it has to go to the graphic designers by around September twenty first, September twenty second.
So essentially, October third, version three should be the final version, barring changes from the select board.
Uh, it would be the recommended version from the planning commission. But when I was, um, went through an amendment process once before here, the planning commission had additional changes and they wrote, they wrote a memo, you write a memo to the select board and, and you can advise them. It's just more that we are no longer in control of the document, it's their processes in control of the document. Okay, so since I'm really a layperson and a volunteer, I'm going to just check in with David. That, do I have the process right? It's fine, okay.
It's fine. I think from a, from the perspective of the public, you probably want to set an end date is, we want to hear any of your feedback, any of your comments up to a point certain, which is probably September nineteenth, between now and September nineteenth, if you're taking public comments, then you're going to hold a public hearing, you'll close the public hearing, then you'll decide as a commission, all right, what, what stays, what goes, what gets added in, what changes do you want to make? To then create that version three.
Right.
That then you are ready to send on to select board.
And then on October third, we vote, and we say, yes, we're ready to set forward this to the select board to consider.
Correct.
So I think we should think about other activities that we might want to do other than, so we have a couple, there's September fifth planning commission meeting, where we can discuss the draft, and we also have September nineteenth, the hearing. Um, we're at the farmer's market and so we'll discuss now, but put in the back of your mind, are there other things like an open house, or a webinar, or a coffee hour, donuts, or something that the planning commission, yeah, an ice cream social might want to do to generate some interest in providing feedback, especially from people who haven't been involved at all, or haven't been involved in a long time. Um, we can submit an article to the Mountain Gazette about the town plan and raise some awareness, we can use from porch board, so we're not just confined to our meetings. It's kind of a good opportunity to go back to where people are at soccer, at places of worship, at, you know, at work, at J-Cap, whatever. Okay, any other questions on this schedule? Is that helpful?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So based on that, um, we are tonight looking at version two and beginning to compile edits and improvements to create version three. So part of me was said, okay, should we just go down the line and have each person? Because I know everybody has looked at it and has more comments and, um, feedback to deliver to David. Each person, or would we prefer something a little more chronological, where we all look at, you know, chapter two together and share our comments, chapter three together, so that's a little bit more document focused, since our previous that was higher level. And I think like we're at the point where, um, you know, we want to be pretty much digging into document. And I think in pretty, in the interest of time, most of our time tonight should still be focused on volume one. And then we need to have a discussion about how to edit going forward and volume two. And I talked to David about this offline, and I talked to Wendy about it offline through email. Um, we're at a disadvantage because we're like saying, Linda, so, um, I thought maybe we should go through a review before we talk about how we're going to go forward from here. So what do you guys like better, do you like a person by person, or chapter by chapter?
I'm a little confused. We're going to talk about volume one now?
Volume one draft version.
Oh, oh, gotcha, sorry.
Yeah.
My preference would be chapter by chapter.
Chapter by chapter, so you get your mind around the topic.
Yeah.
That works, you kind of deal on the topic, or explore that, okay. All right, so based on that, then, um, we will look at it and I'm going to actually make one suggestion, which is that we skip the intro.
You want to share?
Sure. Heather, oh, I want to, I want to, I want to. One vision. You do, can I?
It's in that, I can read it here.
Nope, that's okay. Well, I was only thinking maybe between the vision and the plan, it's been that time, but so that whatever works here. You got your wheels turning, you're, you've got like, not you personally, like we, like have the.
What it, that is fine.
I bet, as long as there's not, yes, right, I mean, just watch the chart.
Right, because I know that last, the last time we talked about volume one, version one, we sort of ran out of time at the end, and we didn't have a whole lot of time to talk about the future land use chapter, or the getting things done chapter.
Uh, so perhaps we should start there.
Let's do it at the end.
Start with the land use and the getting things done. If we hadn't had enough time to talk about it, does that work?
Yeah, I, I felt rushed for the future land use, and I don't think we've talked about getting things done hardly at all. If that was, is that y'all's recollection?
Sure, I think we could do that.
Okay.
Let's do that. Okay, so we'll start at future land use, which is.
Page fifty nine.
Yeah, page fifty nine.
It's sixty five, it's a document if you're going from zero to one, but fifty nine hundred quarter.
Okay, so Wendy, why don't you, do you want to start us out on your comments? And again, I think like we're, we're going to have an opportunity to like super wordsmith this thing. Um, so I think we're looking for a little bit of conceptual, I mean, it's, it, obviously there's, there's wording that's, if you, if it doesn't represent what we, what direction we think we're going in, then definitely let us know, but we don't have to worry about individual.
Yeah, I think I'll just, I'm going to stay kind of a, a higher level.
Okay.
For, for right now. Um, I think a lot of the text that is included on the, in the chart areas, like, so when we're talking about the different, um, land use areas.
Which pages are?
Well, this is just more in general, so we're like, there's a chart about, um, on ag conservation areas on page, uh, well, my sixty five, and then there's another one that talks about, um, the residential infill areas. And so it starts out, there's three different cells for those areas, land use priorities, development pattern, and infrastructure. And then for some of the subsequent areas, like the compact mixed-use centers, um, there's further cells that talk, that have the headers, building types and building scale. And I felt like particularly in the building types and building scale, that a lot of the ideas presented is that it felt like they are not vetted thoroughly, that we haven't talked about things thoroughly. And when thing, and it felt, it felt like zoning regs to me.
Right, are you, so I'm looking at version two, and I, those cells have been eliminated.
It'll be page seventy until you get.
Till I get to page seventy.
Oh, okay.
So they, yeah, so they've just felt way too specific, not vetted. And, and at the top of the chapters is saying, this is not about zoning, and yet when I get there, it feels like it's about zoning.
Okay.
But can I ask, do you want to spend some time talking about those things, Jack?
Yeah.
Or are you suggesting that they should go?
I'm suggesting that they should go.
So David, you've, your guidance was that they should be included. So. Or at least those, or at least that future land use.
Selena, can you put that up on the screen for our guests?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So I left that in, that those two rows were as part of each table for each of the future land use areas. I left it in for the compact mixed-use areas, because that's the place where you are looking to emphasize development opportunities. So I'm trying to paint a picture of what is that? What's important about that? What was the basic kind of concept and, and scale of development that you're talking? That's the purpose, I think. It, it is not zoning, but all of this ultimately informs the zone in thinking about, okay, so what? What does the zoning include? That's why I suggested that.
I wonder if there's a way, I, I agree with what Wendy's saying, I wonder if there's a way to take out some of the phraseology there that deals with things like narrow lot sizes, parking, um, types of housing, townhomes, cottage courts, so and so forth. Leaving more of an issue about mixed-use, commercial, street-level, residential above, behind kind of thing, but dropping out the, uh, the other bits in the building scale, you know, neighborhood scale, in keeping with Jericho building style or something to that effect, rather than two to five stories with three stories in the village, and, because I, I agree, I think that sounds like a prescriptive, rather than a objective, what do we want in this area?
I did a different question. So these, um, mental images are, are associated here with the future land use.
Right.
Is there a reason, though, why these mental images shouldn't be associated with the current land use and their current zoning? Other than that, we don't have the infrastructure to support it.
Well, it's a future land use map, so you're, you're describing development in different parts of the town. So you want to describe how you might envision it in the future.
Can I offer? Yeah, but there's nothing super clued it from happening today. Like, I think of a future land use map as you have to do X, Y, and Z, and change these various things to accomplish this, which cannot be accomplished with the current land use.
Oh, yeah, not necessarily. I mean, if, if the pattern.
Doesn't exist.
If the pattern that exists there today is one that you're looking to perpetuate, or doesn't exist there today, but the zoning enables it, you're still, again, painting a picture of how do you want this particular part of town? How would you envision this year getting developed over time? How would you live when you do do your, develop your zoning? What guidance are you looking for? Does the town plan say, okay, this is, this is the, the range of scale, the range of building types that, you know, we were thinking of when we crafted this part of the plan? That's the policy, now how do we implement it through zoning?
And this, this is a state-required chapter, and the state requirement is, um, focuses on the including, conclusion of the maps, but not necessarily a detailed narrative?
Uh, a future land use map, is there a future, I mean, typically you would describe these areas. You, you need to provide some direction. You can't just, you know, here, here's a future land use map and not explain what it is and what's, what's perhaps, perhaps unique or different about it.
Can I ask that, maybe this is premature, it's not very solution-oriented, but Wendy, would it feel different if it were labeled common features associated with mixed-use centers or something that it's, so it's not, it's, because what I hear you is if the difference between being prescriptive and descriptive, where we still have options. So the prescriptive is, this is what we've settled on, this is what we think needs to happen versus here are some common features to be considered as we think about when I'm, what. I don't know, I'm just offering it up.
Yeah, I, I understand what you're saying. Um, there's something about when you write, like, when you're writing, if you only write down one sort of vision, it limits creativity and thinking about what, what else could it be? And, and so I, I guess my hesitation comes back to the fact that we, we have not, we have not received a lot of feedback on, on this, on this idea, on these future areas at all, because they're new, right? We're putting out these new ideas, and then to drill down to a level of detail where it sort of confines innovative thinking, it, it feels premature.
So is it the numbers, like four to five units, six to twenty? If, or is it just the whole concept of building type?
I think it's more of the whole concept of the building type.
You know, I, I agree with what Wendy, what you're saying, I think it's, again, by saying it's residential types, ADUs, townhouse, condos, it's by omission excluding other housing types. And I don't think we want to do that. I think our intention is to say these are diverse building types of all sizes and uses, because it is a village center and it should have that diversity within it.
Is there a way of sharing that, I'm not just, I'm just asking questions for us to make that. Um, if they think about housing, so if they think about our bigger goals, right, which we're super clear about, infrastructure, expanding the range of housing options that exist for people, having some concentrated development that does such a thing. Do you, if you took this out, would it stand sufficiently without this? So I'm just wondering, like, do we need to spend a lot more time discussing these? Do we need to modify? Or do we took it out, do you feel like there's enough information without it?
I would say that if we. I would say that if we take out the prescriptive part. And insert something that says, consistent with the village. Intention of a center for growth. And diverse housing, diverse opportunities. That leaves it open to interpretation by everybody. Without saying, hey, kind of really much new townhomes here. Something, something to that general effect would be. The way I would go.
But if you leave it wide open to interpretation, that's just what you're gonna get. As opposed to if you have, if you have some. Examples and you know, when it comes to those. Uh. How residential types, you know, describing duplex and triplex and ADUs, you know, including as examples, so that. The intent there is that. What we're trying to express here is that we want a wide range, we want a diversity of residential. Housing types and configurations, so the intent is for.
If you wanted to say that.
Including and. Then that's what it does say. And the only the only place where it gets. Uh, perhaps more detailed is the last part is, you know, six to twenty units, you know, again, I'm trying to. Conceptualize, you've got small, like, if I said small multifamily. What does that mean? One person's gonna interpret that as one thing, another person is gonna interpret that as another thing. And given a lot of comments that we've gotten about, oh, we don't want Jericho to look like Williston or Burlington, it's like, you have to. Put some sense of scale to them, you know, these are not, you know, eighty or a hundred junior department. You know, the these are, these are smaller buildings and, you know, six to twenty, twenty may be. It may be too big in some contexts, it may be too small in others. If you've got a, you know, exist, a large existing building that you could actually get twenty-five units. You know, you don't like, you're not confined to it, but it's giving you a sense of the scale. So I kinda like. Heidi's point of, you know. Examples include. Or some sort of moderate, you know. Modifying language to. Make it clear that, you know, these are some examples to provide that context.
Included but not limited to.
Yeah, including but not limited to.
No, if if we do that, then I I would just also encourage that we have something that says. In the wide range of residential building types, including ADUs, townhouses, we don't have single. Single occupancy, single owner occupancy listed there at all.
Right, right.
So it's the intention that we want the Jericho. Center to not have. Single owner, single occupied housing.
Um, no, because, you know, your townhouses. Are also single-family homes, they're just attached.
So.
Doesn't say single family detached, it's not meant to be. That we're specifically excluding them. That's for sure. You would have.
Wouldn't we invite it all, how many of them are already here?
You would.
That it's happening to be knocked down.
But I mean, somebody who wants to build a new one. Could face opposition from their neighbors and others in town to say, that's really not where you're supposed to put it anymore. And we we would be. Basically. Excluding someone who wanted to have that kind of house.
That's only if the zone.
Right, I actually think the examples. If the examples are. Flexible enough as examples. Help. Evaluate. Infrastructure investments, because they explain. What you're trying to accomplish, at what scale you're trying to accomplish, and at what scale you're trying to accomplish that has. I I think scales are huge, important thing for us to be able to read, okay? Because at one of my big. Overall. Um. Sort of thoughts about the plan at the stand now in version two is we have not hit at people's fears. Right, we haven't explicitly captured the fears that we have heard when we are asking about change. So we haven't called explicitly, we do not mean. Strip malls, we do not mean. Um, you know, sort of development that looks like Burlington or Williston or whatever. We 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 haven't like there's like, I I think we're promoting a vision. But as soon as people hear development, their brains go to a particular place, and we haven't said that's not what we're talking about with this vision. Or we use the language still here, we're still using the language affordable housing instead of housing that's affordable. As soon as you use affordable housing, people have an image in their heads.
Of a project.
Of a project housing. Exactly, and so I think that we have to be very, like, as much as we're writing for what people vision, that's the positive. Then we also have to write with something that helps clarify those things that we've heard people are worried about. That we aren't intending in this, and so for me. That actually leads to having more. Definition of scale, it may not include that there should only be two stories for a building. Right, something like that, but it is like the in terms of the size and the scale, I think it's really helpful for us.
Yeah, I think I think my my major sort of like gut reaction when I was reading this, it's and it's mainly within the compact use centers. Is the language that says, you know, uh. Parking is green from view, like this is under development pattern about parking is green from view by placing it behind the building. You know, I I mean, it's all, it's all about the. It sounds like Riverside. And we're talking about reforming. The code for Riverside, so why include it in? It it's just premature.
Right, yeah.
But that, but I, that specific example is in the current town plan.
Right, but just because it's in the current.
I'm just, I'm just saying in terms of. You know, that that note, that level of detail or specificity. Uh, actually comes right out of the specific, comes out of the current town plan, and I think when it comes to. Very important uh development elements. If if those are issues that are important to the community, you wanna call it out, just like. Building housing that's affordable to low and moderate income families is is really important and building infrastructure. You know, do you wanna have parking lots? Infronting the public streets in front of all the buildings. No, you want the parking to be. In the back and behind, you want.
Some people would argue with that, though. Some people, some business owners, and I've heard them, they've been here. They're like, they want the parking in the front. We have a, I have a thriving business.
Yeah.
You know, so like, not everyone feels that parking should be in the back, and so since that at that, and so this is a vision for the future. Since we haven't, since we know that there's diverse opinion about it, I don't think that should be at this level of specificity.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
I'm with Wendy on this.
So. I think it's less about what it looks like and more about how it functions, and we're gonna take public comment in a little while, so. You just bear with us, um. So. I think. Large setbacks and parking is probably is probably, I agree, that paragraph in particular, it's too detailed for this location. But I think what is important is that. Parking, you know, regulations or building patterns, building scale. Need to be. Approachable by people on the foot. And people in wheelchairs and people with little kids, so it's not about how it looks, it's about how it functions. So I think, you know, if we wanna comment it out, parking like the last sentence, you know. Parking. Place within a structure, blah, 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 it doesn't matter, but it's more, it's more like. Parking needs to not interfere. With active ground level uses at the street level. But also uses. The whole, it's really more about the people. So it has to serve the people who are trying to approach. The buildings at the ground level, and some cases. With that, of the parking can be designed one way, in other cases, it can be designed another, so I agree about the parking. In terms of the building size and scale. I I guess I kinda lean toward Heidi's description that describing the scale, I think, is helpful. To address fears and also to help rationalize investment and also size investment in your. You know, when we. Ultimately are. Um, looking at. Plans for infrastructure, but I don't think we need to have the numbers. Of units, I think it could be, you know, village scale or smaller scale and larger scale, because larger scale, that's well-designed. Can be a lot better than smaller scale, that's crappy design, that. Doesn't have good amenities for pedestrians and doesn't have, you know, good energy efficiency and stuff like that. So I think it should be more about the function. For the people and less about what it looks like. But. You know, the the more kind of direction, then when our work comes next to. Develop new zoning, it's helpful to have. A framework. And not just start from scratch and say like, oh, well, now I have this argument now because we never had it before. So I'm trying to like figure out how do we define the framework? And not avoid the argument, but not pre, I'm sorry.
Obviously, we don't need to.
Debate, I should call it a debate or deliberation, so, okay, what else?
Be on the planning commission when we do this owning rate, so we can.
Um, what else about the land use chapter, if people wanna offer? And Wendy, you can keep going.
I'll 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 pause for the other folks.
Okay. Wanna go, Eric?
Um, I I actually did not get to this section as of yet, so.
Okay.
I'm reading as I'm going, but I am not a speed reader.
Okay, I'll go. Um. So future land use talks about the village centers, and we talk about vibrant vibrant centers of. Neighborhoods, culture, community and commerce, and I'm constantly looking for ways to insert learning, education, schools. Since the schools happen to be the hubs of our centers. Um, wasn't crazy about the, um, here I am, words and things, but wasn't crazy about the word pockets of residential infill, because that sounds to me some of what. Sabina was warning that's about, we don't wanna create islands that are disconnected and surrounding. Development with pockets of things, I just, I don't think that's the right image. I I don't know what the right image is, but that did work for me, maybe connected by residential infill or integrated with residential infill. And I I think that in this future land use plan, we want to um. Acknowledge the idea about leading. With our natural resources and not. Necessarily the historic zoning map. So that the future land use plan. Does a better job than our current plan of protecting natural resources. And connecting natural resources and identifying. Areas for growth.
So can you explain what you said about leading with? Versus the current zoning?
Um. There's. The um. You know, when you look at like. An actual map, like the topography, and you look at the rivers and the flood plains and the mountains and the roads. That and the resources that you want to protect. By. Elimin, process of elimination that tells you where your development should be able to occur in most other places.
But in this section, we lead with. The natural resource protectionary. And then agriculture, so we, we say, these are the. We begin with, these are the important places we wanna protect, and then get to, these are the places where we would anticipate. Most future development to occur for lots of reasons, but.
Right, so I just think that just maybe the text would just make that point stronger, more obvious. Like, it's obvious to you because you think about it. If I said that to my husband, he would, he would, he's a smart guy, but. I don't mean to drive him, but he he, you know, what we think about and what. You know, then we have to make a plan so that the next planning commission is well-advised, and then DRB is well-advised and. So I'm thinking about, you know, just making the, you know, sort of banging over the head. I think so, there's a line, there's a consistently in language about our historic patterns. As, and it begins to feel like. Therefore it is. Right, as opposed to therefore it could change. So it's sort of like, there's a difference between our historic patterns and now centering our plan versus. For your information. Historically, we did this, and now we're gonna do that. Right, and I think that that is.
Historically, we built Montpelier next to the river, right? We wouldn't do that today.
So there's a little bit, it's it's a little bit about the tone and the emphasis.
We cut all the trees.
Right? Uh, but the other thing is, there's in the narrative. In the beginning of the um, in the other, in the, not in the land use plan, but in other parts of, uh, maybe it was in the introduction. There's some really nice language at the beginning of the document about. The. Balance that we're trying to walk between preserving the natural landscape. And finding opportunities for economic and housing development. That's not in the land, that doesn't like jump at the introduction of the land use section. Right, that that is what we're trying to do in this one, it's not necessarily about observing historic. Patterns. It's about really paying attention to, this is what it's been. And here the challenge for us today. And moving forward is this preservation of the natural landscape. And finding opportunities for economic and housing development. So it's stated elsewhere in the document, but it's not, it doesn't pop here in this land use section, so it's one which will pick up a land use section. They're not gonna know. That's what we're trying to achieve. And I'm making that up, though, so.
Yeah, no, that's, you said it way better.
Yeah. Um, and then on my page sixty-two, which is the natural resource protection area. I think we need to feather in a new regulation about forest blocks. That we um. There's some mention of that. Of the state. Regulation about forests.
Right, that that's actually, there's, there is specific mention of it in.
Volume two.
In volume two, and that is something that Sabina and I have been back and forth a little bit on to understand. Kind of where is that data set? In terms of uh our. It's readiness for use, so I intend to find a way to weave that into.
Okay, I mean, you do say large continued, the very first sentence, I don't mean you say, the plan, who perhaps says. The large contiguous contiguous blocks of forested habitat, you know, which. Has been identified by the state as a primary conservation resource to conserve, you know, so that. The town is kind of on the hook to. Um. Do more and do better and to. Follow what the state guidelines are. Um. Then in in the uh natural resource protection area, you talk about flood-prone areas. And it seems like enabling water courses and handling water. Just be slightly stronger in the next section, now I'm on page sixty-three. Um. In infrastructure, the last bullet says, community offsite water and wastewater should be considered only where it's necessary to support. Compact development, and I actually, I'm not sure. That's a feasible statement, exactly, to me, it's more like. Private and private shared. Should be considered whenever you can, right? So instead of saying. Like, community implies public. But we're in this, you know, natural resource area where we're not necessarily facilitating.
The town's not gonna build.
Right, so I think you were, what, that's what you were, the point that the text is making now is, oh, by the way, this probably doesn't make sense for the town to get involved.
Right.
But I think instead what we want to do is encourage. Share the infrastructure because it's a more efficient land use. Pattern whenever we can, especially if. If you look at like a neighborhood like Tyler Place, you know, in a very rural area, but it's a compact neighborhood. With some shared facilities, that would be a good model to work.
Right, so so the point being here. Uh, that that I'm trying to get at is. How it's kind of as the poster child for that, where. You've done a compact residential. Development with share, some shared infrastructure as part of a larger project that can conserve all this other land. So ba- basically, the essence of what the P V process is intended to do, that's really the only time you're gonna. That's really the only time you're gonna see those kinds of systems because it's the only way you're gonna aggregate. That a land area enough to build, uh, enough units of housing in, in a cluster.
Right. So I think I, I'd like to see the text encourage the behavior that we want. Rather than warn people that they're fully on their own.
Yeah.
That they know the town is probably not gonna participate there.
No, share the, share is a better word than.
I think private share.
Yeah.
You know.
And like this, it's sort of only where it is necessary, should be wherever it is possible.
Yeah, exactly. Right. I'm, I'm saying the glass is half full. And I have the same comment in the, in the next one, which is the ads conservation area. Um. And then for residential infill, we, we talked about, am I going too fast? Actually Nancy is amazing, and I meant to say this when we accepted our minutes, that we didn't have Nancy at our last meeting and it was a bear do the minutes. And then she kindly went back and looked at the video. So.
Oh, my God.
I know, it's amazing. And so I'm not worried that you're not getting every note because we know that we'll get it in a minute. So. Okay, on page sixty-six. Um. There's a description of the development pattern, which focuses a lot mostly on a residential pattern, which is appropriate. Cause you're probably got a residential infill area. But I think we've also discussed that that, those areas. Their primary pattern. Or one of the functions is that they need to provide convenient access to schools. Parks, childcare, accommodate in-home businesses and accommodate telecommuting. Like those are. Functions, those are benefits that those, that that infill area is going to deliver to people who live here. So I think that's a little too narrow the way it is now. It's sort of about, you know, just about the little houses.
Right. It's about li- literally the physical pattern of, of development.
Yeah, it doesn't include the why. It's the why, without the why.
Yeah.
And I think what Susan is offering them is a little description about why this makes sense. Right. Maybe it's the under, maybe it's better under the land use priorities because the reason we want this. The reason we want the future land use to have this type of, uh, area. The first part, land use priorities explains to accommodate housing, obviously, but the reason why it makes sense. To encourage housing in those areas is because those areas can provide convenient access. To schools, parks, childcare, locations for in-home businesses and telecommuting. Um, and then I think my last comment.
Before you move on from infill?
Yeah.
On the map for infill, there's some pink that's not labeled.
Hmm.
I, I, I think it's, it's labeled on the other maps, but on this particular map, there's no, the legend doesn't believe that that pink is.
On this one?
Yeah. Yeah. Sorry.
No, that's okay.
That's, that's the.
Yeah.
Right.
Right.
But, but the pink is the existing village.
Right.
Area.
Right.
But it shouldn't really be on there because it's not part of the residential.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've got it.
Thank you.
On, on the topic of the map, the, the residential infill. Yeah. Correct me if I'm wrong on this, Sabina, you're more than actress than I am, but there's a fairly extensive amount of wildlife that goes across Packer. In south of Fort Row, and there's, there's no corridor there for them.
Well, I was gonna say in your sentence, avoiding and protecting natural water sources and that whole thing. Would be some kind of addition of, um, you know, protecting. Uh, well, for protecting the connectivity between the forest blocks. And therefore also.
Which is one of the protect, I agree on.
How about we protect some people?
So, so is that the wildlife corridor? Those would be wildlife corridors, yeah. And then the section on compact mixed-use centers. So this phrasing is different than the rest of the document. We talk about villages and neighborhoods and village centers and village areas. Um, and now the terminology is compact mixed-use centers, which I think you're probably, it's probably adapting from that. From the transect concept. Um. But which actually means that village core and village neighborhood should be reversed. Because we're going from the least populated to the most populated. And that the phrase compact mixed-use centers. I feel like it's kind of foreign to Jericho. And like we should just be consistent. Is it a village growth area? Is it a? Um. Which is just a wording thing, so.
So the use of the term compact mixed-use centers is not consistent with that conceptual place. The way it's described in other parts of.
Yes, right. Um, and then on page sixty-nine. This is probably, it's right on top of where we find that large setbacks is, um. So there's a description of the character of the village defined by the relationship and reflecting multi-story mixed-use. Structures, um, and I, but again, I think. We need to, um, explain the why, which is engaging pedestrians and also including public spaces and green spaces. So you talk about interrupting building bulk and incorporating transitions. I know what that means and you know what that means, but the average person doesn't know why we care. It seems like the worst.
Right. And then we get again with more kind of that very specific language, that last paragraph.
Yeah. Yeah.
I don't wanna inter.
Nope, I'm done.
I just had, I just had some other comments on that page.
I want to, but it's more like just the legend comments, not great.
Okay. I always just wanted to talk more about. Um. That it begins on the top of. Sixty-eight goes to sixty-nine. It sort of implies that we're going to be doing very specific top of, of, um. Master plans for corners and centers. And. And I, I might have missed the memo.
No, that's one of the actions though, that David has recommended in the action list for years, like three plus or something.
Yeah, I am. It, it feels like when, it feels a little bit contradictory when we're talking about trying to simplify regulations. That, and that we're seeing like the, the, the plan for Riverside. We're, we're starting to reverse it a little bit now, or we're considering it anyway. We're thinking, is it really working? Do we need to rethink this? The housing committee was saying either change it or, or ditch it. You know, that was basically, I'm paraphrasing. But that was their recommendation. Do we wanna continue to, to go in that direction? It feels.
Well, I think they're different. A master plan, not zoning necessarily.
Yeah. So this is talking about a master plan.
Might pre, pre-seed the, you know, that would be the follow-on, but a master plan I would think of that would be. You know, the roads and the sidewalk, more of like the design and the function. Of the area. What is its development capacity? How is, uh, what is water system going to be developed here? In what order? Are they, are they fine if they have the same zoning or could we? I don't wanna use the word exploit. Could, could we leverage more development opportunity by? Nuancing the zoning, one center to the other. Their locations are a little different. They're, you know, two of them on are, are on Route fifteen, one of them's not, one of them's more historic. One of them more residential. So. That made sense to me actually, that we would, and when, remember we did our village walks, there were some things that were common. And then there were some things that were needed for each area. So the reason, the outcome of that might not change the zoning at all, but the outcome of that might. Fund a sidewalk or might prioritize a wastewater project over another. That's how I interpreted that.
And, and I think it should definitely inform the zoning to make sure that. You, you know, you, you need to take a deeper dive into these places that you really want to facilitate more mixed-use development to, to occur. You need to understand really where are those conflict points between the natural resources that are there, the, the. Um, the steep slopes and the wetlands and the, the flood plains and the travel corridors. Versus this is also a place where we want to see development happen. So how do we tease out and balance those things better? You can't really do it well in a townwide plan. You need to take a deep dive into these individual places. And then make sure that your regulations and your infrastructure investments and everything else then help you get where you wanna go.
And I would, I would, I, I hear what you're saying. Um. And my next comment is more about sort of like that per, a little bit of a. How, how words can sort of paint a picture of what you're, of what we're trying to say. So that next paragraph says. Should generally retain and respect the scale and architecture of character that. Um. Constitutes a valuable, unique part of our cultural heritage, but opportunities for newer, a modern or oppor-. New and more modern structures are also encouraged. I would say and because it's not, it's not a binary.
Yep.
Um, and maybe put a little bit more emphasis on. You know, painting a picture of what those new and more modern structures would look like, you know, that it's not. They, uh, both can be possible.
Okay, Sabina, you got a legend.
Oh, yeah. Um. Just with your half-mile walking distance. Um. It's not. I know that those dotted lines are that, but it didn't really show up anywhere else to describe it that way. So. Either just adding it to your, um, caption maybe or putting it in the legend.
Was there one in particular you said that it's not?
Figure five.
Figure five.
So this is the figure five where you have the dashed line representing the five, the half-mile walking distance.
Oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Um.
I had one more, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, go ahead.
I'm, I'm backing up. Sorry, I forgot to mention this one when we were on Ag. And the map. Are.
Which?
Uh.
Just so I can get that through the screen.
Ag map is on sixty-four, figure three. We're not, we're not showing the soils types, like the, where the prime ag soils are in relationship to what we're calling ag conservation.
Hmm. No, I didn't map, I didn't include that in the, in the.
Not, are we even including current use for these? I mean, a lot of those, I believe, are relatively fallow at this point, aren't they?
Really like high level. Not cars, not what would necessarily be agreed for each of ourselves.
I get, I get my point about the soils is, are we conserving the right kinds of, are we conserving the right places? If we wanna have the best soil, we wanna have our egg conservation conserving the best soil. And that kind of goes back to a comment that S J made or the whole housing committee made. It was about. Using natural resource mapping to guide.
Right. So I guess I sort of, I assumed that that's what drove these boundaries.
Right. It's, it's a combination of properties that are in current use, properties that are, uh. Are or were in an agricultural use, uh, some of the primag soils, you know, and again, this is where. You need to get to that finer level of detail around the villages because. In some of those village centers and then around those village centers, you're gonna find primag soils. And you're gonna then, you know, does it make sense to, to try to preserve pockets of primag soils in a place? That maybe can't functionally support much in the way of agriculture because it's disconnected from other kind of agricultural infrastructure. You know, yeah, um, market gardens and things like that perhaps. But that's, that's where you kind of have to have that conversation. So this is looking at, you know, aside from the, the, uh, the larger forested lots, which there are more than. Show up here based on the most recent data, you know, the rest of that area is largely, uh, open land of one corner of them.
So you would, when you just want to make sure that everything in, that. We're not necessarily just discounting prime ag in the white areas. Like if there is a prime ag in the white areas, that's currently, it'll say, you'd wanna know that. Or if you market that.
The issue is preserving land for a view as opposed to agriculture. The view and agriculture are two different things. And you wanna preserve agricultural land for agriculture. If you wanna preserve views, call it something else, put it in another category. Labeling it. Open land and agricultural land, it's land that's been brushed off.
Hasn't been for the last five years, just hasn't grown up yet.
Right.
So we might wanna call it scenic, scenic preservation. Well, I think the intent, the intent here is that it, it may not have been in active agriculture for the last several years because. The farm, you know, long since sold, but it could return to some form of active use. Which gives it some economics viability, some purpose. But, but the purpose is that. It's a resource there to be utilized today and in the future. Once it's gone, it's gone.
The land on Mansfield Road is not agricultural land. It's open, but it's not agricultural land. People cut suicide on a farm.
I, I think the, the issue with it is, yes, it's been lying fallow. And it's potentially could be agriculture. But after thirty years, and when you've got twenty-foot trees on there, it's not going back to ag. It's had a lot of effort. So if we wanna preserve the view corridors, which everyone in Jericho says, I love the view. I gotta be able to see Mansfield. I gotta be able to see Camelsup, all of those. You put twenty, forty-foot trees along the side of the road. And you might as well be up in New Hampshire driving through the White Forest.
So that, I don't know, I just have time for a second. I'm lost in this conversation, I have to say.
It's a tangent.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I, I feel like. The critical question that I'm understanding, Wendy, that you're asking is. What is the use of this map? Does it, and does it have the data that represents the use that we are intending it to have in terms of decision-making? Because what we want for decision-making is a map that helps us. For informed.
Yes.
About whether or not we are going to be recommending to the town now through the plan and then later through zoning. That agricultural soils. Need to be a high priority for preservation compared to something else. Like, and that, right now, this does not visually represent that for you.
It doesn't because I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
Yeah.
You. Why, you know, how the, this area was chosen, if it indeed was chosen on different levels of ag soils. And if I'm not sure if we're, if this is, if this, one of the purposes of the map is to communicate up. Future plans, I think it would be important to include.
And one of the values that we have. Is at least knowing where our prime agricultural land is.
Yep.
So that should there be changes over time. Whether it be because of climate change or economic development, we want to make sure that. We are very aware when decisions are made, this is agricultural, good agricultural soil. So we need to know that. We're not saying we're gonna trump that versus something else right now, but we need to at least. Have that knowledge represented so that we and future decision-makers know that's what they're getting in the map.
Yeah. And that's. Like I said, this is not directly illustrating primag soils. There is another map that does include all primag soils. I don't remember which. Which number is.
But we also have an overlay. I mean, we have the river overlays, we have wetland overlays.
Maybe we just need another map, David, because we have a second one that has the.
The more you add to these, the more muddled the message gets.
And if we can have one that's about agricultural soils, what I'm hearing is that would be very helpful. And if we can have one that's about agricultural soils, what I'm hearing is that would be very helpful.
Oh, there there definitely is. Like I said, I don't remember which
Okay.
which map it is.
Granted, I understand that you're saying it gets more muddled, the more layers you put on, but it does kind of seem like like the primag soil map as an overlay to include on this map will be worth the visual struggle.
Yeah.
I don't, I personally don't need it to be in the same as the natural resource. Uh, this is the ag conservation.
This is.
It's showing both, but yeah.
Can we split it into two?
That's my, that was what I did. That's what I was sort of saying. If they were split. There's the natural resource.
There's, there's in the chapters, but this map right here says the ag conservation and natural resource.
So we're just.
I'm saying this map can be turned into two maps.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay, I got it, right?
Right, or just show the.
Or just again, right? Then we would be clear that it's answering what Wendy's suggesting, right?
If we do that, I would very much like it if we also do clearly identify the view corridors and where they are and make sure that they are something we protect.
Well, I don't think that's something that you have well articulated, and that's one of my recommendations in here is that you have this this visual analysis document, but it really only talks about a couple of places in town. But for that to really be useful, you you need to really understand where are all of the view corridors, what makes them important? Uh, and then what are the tools you're going to use to try to protect them? Because you know, it's all going to be private land and you're never going to protect all of that space just so you have a pretty view. There's got to be some there's got to be some reason behind some value that keeps it open.
Well, certainly there are things we can do, jumping way ahead, but if we're doing any of our zoning rigs, zoning rigs can say to preserve the view corridor, plant fruit trees, crab apples, peaches instead of maples and white pine. Things that would grow so you get your shade, but don't block the view. And we can identify where those would be fairly easily.
But we are getting ahead of ourselves.
We are, right, we are. But you haven't. That's, that's kind of my point is it's, we we can't map what those view quarters are because they really haven't been done townwide. If that's important, then that study, which was pretty old, it's kind of a pilot effort.
And it also focuses way more on Essex.
It's primarily Essex, so.
Right, after some. Is that in the getting it done list? Because I don't really invite it yet.
Goodness, we have so much. We have a lot of big work to do.
Yes.
You know, like that feels like a lower priority.
Right.
But that's what everyone says they like about Jericho.
Right? So she didn't hear that in our kind of feedback.
The views of Mansfield, the views of Campbell's Hump, it showed up all the time.
Yeah.
David, is there a way that we can get the raw data from the feedback from the community? The May third community event, because I I went back looking at for that. And we have the summary, which is helpful, but it would but we don't have a whole lot of qualitative comments.
Yeah, no, now we have it all.
We do?
Yes, it's in the appendix two because one of the things I was going to suggest to the planning commission is that we take some time to go back and read it because now there's like forty pages of comments.
Okay, that would be little appendix to a volume two?
Yes, and like Heidi was saying about addressing fears.
Yeah.
That's where you mind those comments for quotes.
Yeah.
And all of the quotes that are displayed are confirmations of the plan. And I think some of the quotes should raise some of the fears.
Absolutely.
And it should be some of the objections and or controversies and they did, they did do a very nice job of highlighting where are there areas of disagreement, like some people said this and some people said that. And I think that it really address acknowledging those things and then explaining how we're addressing them.
Yeah.
If we are explaining how we're addressing them would be helpful. So including some quotes that aren't quite so um, sure, but aligned, I guess, with everything and kind of hold our feet to the fire. We've got it. Okay, so should we move on in the interest of.
So I can put those boxes. Can we make it more clear that these comments came from the community forum? Like so that at the top of every box, it says, community forum comment, and then your little quote, and then it says anonymous participant. So there's that consistent line that this is something we've heard.
Yes.
You know, at that event.
And some of them are, yeah, there were surveys and.
Doesn't tie it together a little.
Yes, I also didn't love the word anonymous because sometimes we knew who the person was. Like, I know you're saying it's anonymous, but couldn't just say like president or participant or anonymous just sounds so like a secret person who didn't want it.
That point that's at at the bottom of the box needs to be more prominent.
Yeah, like give it, give each one a title, whatever we decide that is, and then the quote, and then whenever we decide to call the person.
Yeah. Yeah. Right, I think we should take it then, yeah, a few more minutes now and look at getting it done. So um, not that that's an exhaustive list of all the feedback on the capture, but
can I just start with some praise?
Yes.
On the getting it done. I love the format with the way that you brought together the symbols and showed how one action addressed multiple domains of concern. So I thought that was that, I thought that was super effective and thank you very much.
Yeah.
And then if I could ask, because I just talked, maybe a hug.
Go, 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 yeah.
Um, there was one um that I think wasn't not I, and I apologize, like, oh, page eight. Maybe, so it's way far down. Um, okay, there was one that, that's it. So maybe it was the one beforehand. There was one of the things that said affordable housing committee and the Jericho Community Development Corporation will work together and with market participants, residents and developers to identify parcels, policies and funding sources and help meet housing targets.
That comes from the housing resolution.
It was later, it was a later thing than I thought was a priority. So I was wondering about why it was in this section and not in a sooner priority. And it may be just because I don't understand that um what needs to be in place first. But it is there a reason that we need to delay the Jericho Community Development Corporation from just jumping in now to identify parcels?
No, there there's not. And and part of that is the point why, why for each of these tables, it's within a period of time. So within three years, it's not you know, at the three year mark, you should start this. It's just that you could start this now, but you know, it's a higher priority than the things that come after. You can easily move this.
The next one is very high. You should move up higher since the plan is basically saying that housing is pretty very important.
So so that one I would elevate to sooner in the actions. Particularly since we know that so much of what's going to happen is going through private by private efforts. So you know, we want to sort of name that right from the beginning.
Yeah, and throughout all the um actions, I think S J was offering some language choices like mixed income rather than affordable.
Oh, I can, yeah, can we just.
So we have to do a scan and make sure, make sure that that her, that the Affordable Housing Committee's language is reflected in this document.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. That was one of my overall comments for the whole document and not just here. Is that we can, there there are some places where it's been cleaned up, and so it's not using affordable housing. It's a two, two words next to each other.
As opposed to a housing that's affordable.
Yeah, or whatever language is, but we just like, we we need to disconnect that because it creates a vision.
Hmm. Is the Affordable Housing Committee going to change the name?
I'm sure.
Right.
I think it was charted at that, is that.
Um, was it charted? Why can't we?
Yes. We can change, Nick. Yes, the Affordable Housing Committee.
Can I make a motion?
Change.
No, not up to us. But we can ask Eric to talk about it with the committee, right?
What I will do.
In light of the town plan.
Yeah, um, I had a couple of things on the getting it done. I thought we should include the things that we're actually doing that need to get done. So in particular, like we're building a sidewalk, we're designing a sidewalk right now from Jericho Park to Park Street. And I think that can be slated for construction in the midterm list. Time frame.
That's already. Isn't that the project that's already goes in front of them? So did they get approval for it?
Yeah, so right now they're in design, so it'll need to be constructed. So me in the list that we're going to spend money on it and do it. Um, and similarly, like with the um may, maybe it's not worth it to put it in the plan because it's already happening is the Stamtech plan for the path alone from Corners to Riverside. But I'm sure that there's other things that are kind of in the works that could benefit from visibility and commitment that I think offline, we should work on contributing those to the actions list.
Mm hmm. Particularly if there's uh something that's in the planning phase that we haven't committed money to.
Exactly.
Absolutely should.
I think this one looks like we leave across the river to the high school. That would be.
Right, right.
Mm hmm.
Yeah, and some of that stuff, there's a table in the mobility section of of uh, volume two that has all of those recommendations that are in the twenty fifteen by Ed Plan. So th- those are things that are that are all in there, but there, the, all of that stuff isn't necessarily replicated here.
Well, I don't think we should replicate. I think we should know which are the one or two things. So when I went to the Trails Committee last night, I asked them to tell us what are the one or two things that they want to, you know, put there put into the plan.
Yeah.
While we're talking about the action plans in volume two, when you and I were kind of talking about this last night, it was like can we have more language in there that explains how those actions
Yeah.
relate back to these actions which have a timeline and those don't. And I think we piece together some some rationale behind it, but just to make it very clear to everyone else who is.
That would be extraordinarily helpful because I I found myself trying to like looking at it and thinking honestly, how did we get from that longer list in number two? Volume number two to the shorter list here? And I don't disagree with it necessarily.
Right.
But there was that, that like, like it just.
Did you read the action plan?
Right, and so, um. And it would take, and it would take a lot of brain work, and I don't know that we need to do this, but I almost felt like I wanted all those action
Yeah.
boxes to have their own separate space or something. So I could look at them easily and look at, okay, here was the action, the full list, and and now we're only recommending three of them or something. Or maybe, maybe it's like in those action boxes, there's a way of highlighting the ones that are moving into the one to three year or the right? Because you've done that thinking. You, right?
Right, and what those boxes the boxes were a repository of important things not to lose.
Yes.
Right, in the transition.
Right.
But they weren't, they didn't seem like they were the biggest ticket items that we've been talking about for the last several months. So if you've got some ideas as to maybe how to explain what that, what that relationship should be, how to, and how to explain that, I'm all ears. My point simply in creating those boxes was we can't lose these things. Um, but we don't want to just regurgitate all of the action items from the previous plan because part of the intent was to be more strategic.
Yeah, maybe volume one should be years up to three or up to five or something like that. And volume two should be everything else that unless it, you know, or becomes a candidate to move up.
Yeah.
So that they're not that overlap, that they're actually different.
Yeah. I would be glad to spend some time thinking, it sounds like you have already started some thinking about it, about how to frame that why these are highlighted, but they are not the priorities for action.
Mm hmm.
Which is, I think, what you're saying, making sure that.
Yeah, that's very exact.
Tease them out into two different lists. Because the way that it looks right now is that because we've used boxes in other places as here are the priorities, it jumps out visually as like, oh, okay, now here are my priorities.
Yeah.
That's not your intention. So we need a different way of framing it. So I'm glad to give some things to them.
Okay, anything else for right now on getting it done with the other time? Right?
I have some wordsmithing stuff, but that's that's nothing. But I can I offer one, can I offer one more?
Yes.
I'm so sorry, but I was just looking at my notes and and I was thinking about some of the language that was offered by the uh, housing committee that I'm using their new name that um didn't, that I didn't see in the plan that I thought it, that was important to include. And this probably would, it's not in, I'm not sure where it belongs, but I I just want to um I would like to see it in the plan. It says, um, align districts with current and future use rather than historical precedent. That's something that Heidi was was um commenting on. Diverse housing types should be explicitly possible in all residential in in area, in all areas, residential building is allowed guided by natural resource mapping. I thought that that was a very concise and um, forward thinking um, language that I would like to see represented in the plan.
Are you reading something from this that I can put on the screen?
No, it was, it was a comment from the housing committee.
It was in, was it in there written?
Yeah.
Yes, it was.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think I got that from S J, right? As I was transitioning my version, my edits to uh, to Liz for the for this version of the document. So a lot of that stuff didn't get captured yet.
Okay, so we obviously still have a lot of work to do. And um, I think that David, you've done a really phenomenal job over the last several months and we've compiled a lot of feedback from a lot of people. And um, we had talked before about the planning commission being able to help you more with more of the drafting. And also with the planning commission, and I think we have like a business owner and a realtor and an architect and a scientist and academic and like, we're like the Olympics of the planning commission. And that that like, it's not, right, it's not David's plan. It's maybe the bar plan, ultimately, it's the town plan, the select board's plan that um, we, it's potentially at a place where we can be more hands on so that we can get more done and we can get more editing done faster. So David thought that that would work. And um, Wendy had volunteered to, you know, because she keeps saying, I have wordsmithing, I have wordsmithing, I have wordsmithing, and I'm like chomping at the bit myself that um, we would form a smaller group and we would work with David to try to accelerate the production of volume three. And so that the voice becomes a Jericho voice more than a consultant voice. Not that we don't need the wisdom and the guidance, but that you know, eventually we are going to stand up there and defend this plan. And so it really needs to be our plan. And so we.
And live with it.
Right.
Day to day, implement it, you know.
Right, right. So is that, are people in, okay, if we start working offline in smaller group should do that with David and with Linda and Wendy volunteered to do it and I volunteered to do it. And we can have one worker sell to our numbers and wanted to volunteer to do it.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we'll decide like if we want to split up sections, how we want to do it. Um, but I think it's going to be a, a lot of work to get it to feel just right. So with that, then I think what I want to do is have some time for public comment and then consider if we're ready to basically start the process that we described earlier.
Do you know anything that I got a little one?
No, go ahead.
Okay, just, um, and this might have happened because I know I missed a very crucial meeting. Um, way at the very front, the goals are listed in a certain and the whole document is in a certain order. Many people imply order to mean priority.
Mm hmm. I have the same question. Is the chapter order correct?
Right, and so I just want to, I don't know that we need to talk about it tonight, but it is, it is it implies prioritization and I wanted to make sure that we agree with that order.
Mm hmm.
It is very hard to order when everything is interconnected. And I, that's why I loved David, the graphic. It is very hard to order when everything is interconnected, and I that's why I loved David, the the graphic.
Mm hmm.
Pieces that you did to show when we get to the. Action items, you're showing how they interweave. And you can't do that in each chapter, right, in the same way. But it does. It doesn't want order, right?
Yeah.
And prioritization, and so. If it's not now, there may be some time where we just wanna just like at that very high level, just like, are are we cool with that? Possibility, people are gonna walk away with it and find prioritization.
Right.
Maybe we need big graph at the beginning also that.
Right.
And and I think there was some early conversation about that and why it's. It starts with the stewarding a resilient community, because the the natural resources. Uh, of the community was a very high priority for everybody to make sure that, you know, that those resources. That could serve as much as possible. Housing clearly is a s- the next. Really high priority that we have to deal with, so that's kind of the what the progression is.
On tw- page twelve, we start with natural resources, historic role. Only three do we even start talking about development, so to your point of prioritization. Well, it looks like natural resources and then preserve historic character. Based on what the order is on page twelve, page twelve, and perhaps we should. I agree, revisit that and say, you know, this is, these are all priorities, they're all equal. But knowing that people will classify.
Yeah.
Here's what we think should be the first one they say.
Yeah, it's just, it's a human. Okay.
Okay, so.
Okay, so some public comment.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so you editors, you you wordsmithy people, just yes, okay, thank you. Does anybody have some comments for us? You've been very patient, thank you.
I went to a concert.
Oh, come to the concert.
Yeah, yeah.
I prefer to be anonymous. My name is Jim Carroll. Um, I've lived in Jericho for many decades. And uh I appreciate all the work that everyone's doing, I think both is getting missed. So I'm gonna tell you a quick story. I went to a concert once and there was a little guy there, very diversified, world traveler. Probably at the peak of his profession, his name was Yanni.
Mm hmm.
And he had been in Saudi Arabia, he had been at the Kremlin. He had gone everywhere in the world, including China. Where they gave him the right to adopt a panda, which is normally reserved for countries. His band is fully diversified. He doesn't have any words. They they use the sounds of nature and music and stuff, it was very moving. He said the most profound thing that had happened to him. Was that he had the opportunity to visit with the astronauts, and this is a guy who'd been with all of these other people. In every tier in the world. And the experience that was most moving for him was being with the astronauts. Because the astronauts said to him, we grew up, we were educated, we lived. And we look at globe, well, all these colors are on it and stuff, and then we go into outer space. And there's none of those colors, there's none of those borders, but you see the Sahara. You know, twenty seven hundred miles wide. And all of a sudden, you get a perspective and a view of nature. I think that you're missing the perspective of nature. Because the majority of what we talk about preserving and protecting here. Much of it is accidents due to poor stewardship over the past couple of centuries, when we nailed ninety three percent of all the trees. When we uh removed all of our uh uh gravels, and we used them to build railway tracks and stuff. So if we step back and we say, what is the vision? One of the last places that I would look to is the state of Vermont and the Agency of Natural Resources. Just think, after Irene, we had all these problems. It was just replicated, and if you took the news clips, it's the same buildings that have just been flooded. Because fifty years ago, we knew more. About how to stop floods from having an adverse effect. So in three to five days, we did more damage to all the natural resources, in fact, the premier natural resources in the state of Vermont. Because we've got, we're devoid of top down, big picture leadership and governance. And Jericho can stop looking outside for things like village centers and compact development. And say, what can we actually do here and how should we do? Our stormwater, and I'll just take Susan, you're driving. One of the most profoundly stupid things I've seen is to dig up all those new driveways on Barbara Ford Road and put. Culverts in that accelerates in one of the most sensitive environmental areas in Jericho. Water going downhill into a stream is already overwhelming. Instead of saying, let's talk to all the landowners, let's get some easements so that we can gather and collect the waters. Hold them back during peak periods, let them be absorbed into the aqua first. Let's even do some things where we could put some fire protection in. Because we're looking at all the pieces and parts and all the little lines and we're missing the big picture. And the big picture is technology. The reason that village is there is because that's where the water was and there was no power pulse. The reason this got built predominantly economics, convenience, and so now we have this corridor. Where the Coventry landfill, another genius move of the state of Vermont. Just think of the genius of stuffing another portion of the state with garbage that we fall from down here. Because leadership and governance is not there. So I think our town plan needs to scream what our vision is. What our leadership, what our governance is, and how we're going to do it materially differently in the future. Than we've done it in the past. And if you look at it, you're gonna get engagement. If you say to the people, what is it that you want? The people that I talk to, they want safety. They don't want large trucks doing fifty five miles an hour and thirty five mile an hour zone. So if you're not designing the roads in your town plan to make them low speed. And quiet. And jake brakes, make things quieter, because and then the other big issue I'll say to you is resource based planning. Go back to Yanni, look at down, you put things where the topography, the geography. The existing infrastructure and the potential future infrastructure will allow them to be. Because today, we've gone through probably the largest change in my lifetime in the past three years between COVID, H D M I. The internet and Zoom. And people moving out of their offices. You wanna do invest in something really cheap, so buy an office building. Um, so I think, and if you just step back and say, where are we now in this world? We've got serious problems with the development of children that have been adversely affected by this. Anybody that wants to work needs childcare. Well, why aren't we laying out in all this? How children can move from one place to another without having to get in one of the giant three quarters empty yellow buses? And so that people feel safe, because you put the parking lots in back. You know why you can't do that? Is because the people who work late, who are typically lower income. Get adverse things happen to them in a back. Parking lot where they can't be seen. So you've gotta look at the worst case when you design anything. Not somebody driving by in their BMW with the top down saying, oh, doesn't that really look nice? It's gotta be functional and it has to meet the needs of people regardless of their social economic status. Please stop trying to put in a zoning financing and like permanently affordable. That's forever. I'm a financial planner. I spent decades building retirement plans for people. Because the working class people in this country, the hardest thing for them to do is to accumulate money for retirement. Or accumulate a little capital, and guess where one of their biggest assets is? In the equity of their home. So if you wanna socially encourage diverse housing, you do it with money, not with zoning. You establish the Jericho Economic Development Corporation, they've got access to municipal funds. Stop trying to put this all into zoning, it's not gonna work. You have not built a single affordable house under our regulations in the town of Jericho. And you're talking to the person who can't make it work, and I'm really good at making things work, because. Interest rates are sky high, energy costs are off the chart. Uh, labor's not available. Try to build an affordable house today. You need money and you need lots of it, and it needs to come into the system. But then let the person who owns the property take care of the property, have pride in their property. And then reap the harvest of the additional room that they put on. Or the great energy efficiency boiler they put in, because somebody did not tell them thirty years before. You can't get the equity that you deserve for taking care of this property, investing in this property. And doing the right thing, because somebody wanted to feel good about putting something into a zoning regulation. Just like, I'm gonna take a pill and that's gonna cure cancer, doesn't work that way.
Thanks.
So I'd like to encourage you to think about a top down Yanni view of this whole thing and do things differently. Don't look to my pillar, they can't even keep their sewage treatment plant dry.
Thank you. Chuck. Welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Um. So I am an infill person. I live the infill life. I live in Village Center. I have an A D U. Against objections from the town, I built a home, an infill home, you know, on my property. I'm an infill advocate. Uh. I believe. However, that the opportunities within fill are limited, they're slow, it's gonna take a really, you know, a long time. Uh, to uh make a difference, you know, a lot of people just don't want a new house in their lap, you know, and and I think we're sort of projecting the fact that. People go to the centers of the ones that are supposed to be adding A D Us. People live in a ten acre zone, most usually for them to add an A D U than people who live in the centers, you know, that you know, that conversation might go on. You know, the densest housing in Jericho is not in the village centers. You know, Starberg has more homes than Jericho Center in one quarter of the land. Uh. It it's about thirty acres, and in these developments, so so ten, twenty, thirty acres is where we're gonna get a lot of houses passed. So uh, meet the housing needs for a bunch of people. Um. Uh, the foothills has more houses in Jericho Center on half of them. Uh, so when I look at this plan, what I'm looking for is what are the opportunities to build these clusters, because I know infill is gonna happen soon.
Call from Monk out.
Where are the places where we could put twenty five homes on ten acres like Latia Drive? To duplicate Latia Drive where there's ten acres right now would require three hundred acres. Now, so where where are those places? On Plains Road right now, there's a development on thirteen acres that has forty bedrooms. Uh, I want, I'm looking at the plan to make sure that that could be the apartment building with twenty two apartments. Right now, I don't see that in this plan. That is where, you know, I believe the housing uh is gonna come from. So when I looked at the first draft, I saw that there's a hung my hat on. On this, adjusting our regulations to make it easier to build more compact development in and around existing community centers and beyond. And beyond, I said, okay, I'm good. I'm good, I like this. The next draft, beyond is out. Instead, it says, create the conditions necessary to attract and support a minimum of eighty percent of all future development. In and around our community mixed use centers. So the data from two thousand and twenty one, I think it was, showed that only five percent of the houses were built in the village center. Now we're saying eighty percent are gonna be in these small areas. That's the most radical exclusionary tactic Jericho has ever taken. It's more radical than banning old homes. It's more radical than our start, we're still banning duplexes in thirty, seventy percent of Jericho, it's more radical than that. This is the most radical exclusionary policy we've ever had, and it's much more exclusionary than what was stated in the first draft. So I implore you.
Chuck, I'll just, I I interrupt, and I'm sorry to do that, but I will point out that uh. I did not speak about where I had comments, but that shows up twice, and then I said that eighty percent is a ridiculous number.
Okay.
So I I'm on your side with that, and I think I speak for the rest of the.
Repeating historical patterns simply isn't true. It is not true. That Jericho was historically compact village centers dispersed by open land with with hillsides, simply not true. Uh, our population was spread. Spread all over Jericho, there's only twenty houses in Jericho, when Jericho had one third of the population, um.
Ask a line about how well that works.
Um. So then I said, well, I'm gonna really go through and see what are the obstacles to, you know, to to building these compact dense areas. Outside, you know, what we're hoping to be the infill areas. So when we're talking about multifamily housing, it said there must be suitable infrastructure in places to support compact neighborhoods and small scale multi unit housing. That's not true. We have septic for forty bedrooms. Right there on Plains Road is going in, it just happens to go into a bunch of enormous five bedroom homes. So if we have the septic for forty bedrooms, you know, luxury development of twelve acres. We have to agree that we have septic for a development of twenty two bedroom apartments. Uh, the highest priorities around the existing community centers for other types of infrastructure and relatively compact neighborhoods are already concentrated, it's not true. The most compact development, not in the village centers. My house was a farm, it was, they had, they had a dozen cows there. They grew pigs across the street. It was a farming village, and then it was one acre zone. And and for for the village centers for many years, it's gonna be the the uh. Each of Jericho centers, and this also includes commercial district, needs to have its own zoning, set of standards and better of what you need. Whenever we're talking about the four based code, we should say, if we mention it, we need to say it failed. Okay, we maybe we need to revise it, but if we're telling the truth, we need to say it failed. I just put in another window in my house. I'm so glad I got it done for you people, gave me another twenty three regulations on where to put a window. Which is what you did. You do did, I think you might have voted for it.
No, I wasn't.
No.
And in the four based code, now you're talking about doing it all three zones? I don't think so. If you're gonna mention that zone, then mention that it failed, because we all know that it did. Uh, I I guess, I just have to comment, this romance for the village centers. And it always comes from people living in a ten acre zone who are telling you how wonderful my life is. I've seen about eight hundred feet of driving a year, a week, by walking to the store in Jericho. Otherwise, every other round trip for me is four miles longer than yours. People live in the village center, don't drive less. We drive the same amount. We don't have more friends. You guys have friends, we don't walk more. You go for walks, you have places to walk, I have places to walk, we all walk. I'm not happier because I live in the village center. I'm happy because I get to live where I want. There are people who can't live where they want, because you've decided that they shouldn't live there. But this romance for the village centers just doesn't make sense, and when we talk about the future of transportation, it's gonna be demand based. We need a lot of, we can use a lot of the drive in multiple places around Jericho, that's where we're gonna get. You know, that's where we're gonna get our housing, and when I look at, say, the boltly condos, which everybody from Jericho rolls their. Things just near, it just like comes out of their mouth like an obscenity. Okay, there were forty five homes there on about five acres. And those people have the opportunity to live a rural life. And if you look at, say, the 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 development on Plains Road and say, well, we're okay with not with uh. Eight big single family homes, five bedrooms each. But it's out of character, or we're gonna say we have to wait before that same number of bedrooms gets converted into two bedroom apartments. You just really have to ask yourself, are you afraid of people? Or are you afraid of the structure? I mean, are you are you telling people that that's just too ugly for you to, you know, to drive by? You know, so I I I really hope that this plan makes it really clear that we want dancing, compact housing, and it can be everywhere. Everywhere where it is. Everywhere where it is, uh, you know, environmentally appropriate. I'd also object to this assumption that every piece of open land is agricultural land. It simply isn't. And we need to protect, in in the agricultural section should not be about views. The agricultural section should be talking about protecting the agricultural source. And by the way, most of the good agricultural sources in Jericho that are of any size are currently in production. If you wanna protect the views for people driving in cars, then be really clear. We're preserving views for people driving cars and maybe riding bikes. But don't call it anything to do without a check or, you know, what about people walking? Don't they get views?
Thank you, Chuck. And I think, you have anything you wanna conquer?
Please with Alita. And I I I I support your editing it because it's not what I hear coming out of your voices.
Um, anybody on this team wanna offer any comments? Or anybody else here in the room? Okay. Thank you very much. Really helpful. I feel good, we're stirring it up.
Well, I think, God, we we had some good comments from from both of our members of the public spoken something we need to. Incorporate into what we're doing, being, you know, making sure that we're using the land as it's appropriate. I believe, speaking for myself, not for the Affordable Housing Committee or the Planning Commission, I believe there is a. Sincere attempt on the part of all of us to increase the American income diverse housing in the town. That's a foundational point of what Affordable Housing Committee is doing, I believe, as part of ours as well. It's not something we're ignoring. What'd you say?
I said we were the Olympics people, but I also thought we're like the Wizard of Oz people because we have brains. We have the heart and I think we have the courage. And so that's really what we need to go forward. Okay, so then the next item is to consider if we are ready to um entertain a motion. And the motion, this is structured exactly the way it's gonna be structured to. Fit the requirement, which is a motion to accept the draft as the working draft. Initiate the adoption process per the statutory requirements. Seek review and approval by the C C R P C. Their processes generally, they provide comments and that feeds into the editing process. Um, and warrant a hearing to receive further public comments on September nineteenth. At our next, at our, at the regular plan commission meeting. With the understanding that.
Yeah.
All of that will feed into a version three, which we described this evening. The more hands-on editing from the food planning commission members who volunteered to help David. And also knowing that we're not saying the draft is done, we're not saying it's good to go. We're saying if we'd like more people than Chuck and Jim and Glenn and Pete and. Probably Jessica Dion to be paying attention. And by raising that awareness, we can hear anyone can do that. That's not exactly what the motion would say, but so does um. Someone.
Could you rephrase the motion so someone could can uh?
Okay, so does someone wanna make make a motion to accept the town plan draft? Initiate the adoption process for the statutory requirements. Seek review and approval by the Chittingon County Regional Plan Commission. And warrant a hearing to receive public comments on the draft on September nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at seven p.m.
I'll make that motion.
As as stated just now, by.
Second the motion. You'll second?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so all those in favor?
I think you need public comment.
No.
But just put it on the record that the public wanted to comment on your motion and you refused to allow it, okay? I still think this is a democracy, but.
Okay, wait, uh, can you just hold your thought for one second? David, am I allowed to do that? Interrupt my motion to.
No, we're we're interrupting the voting process.
Oh, okay.
To make a comment.
Right, so I'm not a lawyer, I don't play one on TV. That said, you, there's a motion on the table before the the planning commission and there's opportunity for. Usually there is a motion, there's a second, and then there's discussion.
Okay.
Um, it does not necessarily mean that you open it up for broader public comment. You've had a public comment period uh during your meeting. You can choose to have one or more and and entertain that as you wish, but you're not obligated to take public comment on a motion you have on.
Okay.
You are obligated to entertain comments.
Right.
From the members, the voting members of the commission.
Okay. And thank you. Any comments from the planning commission on the motion?
Just to be clear, we do, having made the motion myself, we are still expecting that the. Plan as is currently written will be amended or changed prior to submission to the select board.
Yes, we're anticipating a version three. Will be the outcome of all the work between now and the hearing plus the comments that we hear at the hearing.
Yes.
And that was a question, because I, because I am in a feeling of, I will go live for a team, et cetera. But feeling a little uncomfortable. Um, and I would feel comfortable if, as we are making this motion and we are putting it out to the public. That we have some statement that we are proactively acknowledging that we heard it tonight. And we we have already identified some significant changes that we would like.
Mm-hmm.
And we are interested in hearing more. But I wanna put it out there reflecting that we had a very robust conversation. And about already identified changes that 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 the public will not see in this, in this, right?
Mm-hmm.
But I want that, like, statement, you know, we have that. Are we allowed to do that?
Sure, can you do that?
Yes. So it's it it's on the website, right? It's like on the website, before you download it, there's a statement and a box or something that calls it out.
Yeah, and then when we, when we are pushing it out. We're all, they're always, whatever it is, and that is not just on the website, but as we pointed out, our message is. We know, we've already recognized that we would like to make some changes. And we wanna hear what the additional ones you want to make.
Mm-hmm.
Or something, but just to make it clear that. Work in progress.
So work in progress.
Yeah. I would feel better with that.
Okay.
I thought it's a great idea.
Yep.
Okay, does anybody object to hearing Jim's comment on our motion? Jim?
I don't think you're there yet, and I think you're pushing too hard on the schedule as a priority as compared to the quality and the vision and the specifics. After watching this process fail for forty years and having dealt with in court the incompetence of our regulations. I really think it's time for us to do things profoundly differently and push back and get. To what it is that we want and need that's intelligible to the public. You can't dump a seventy-page document and expect to get public feedback. They don't even understand what it says. So if you give them a vision, an executive summary, and then allow them to go dig into this document, which is much better than the three hundred pages we have now. But the bottom line is, it's not there yet. And I've been doing strategic planning for businesses in Vermont for forty years, not even close. Objectives, priority of objectives, feasibility, and there's some real profound opportunities here to do something different. And you're not there, and I've heard those words come out of you. And this gentleman said, we really need to look at the issue of why are we forcing single-family houses onto it? And single-family lots in every development. Still not dealt with and it's not in this document. I can't find it. Why can't I have ten houses on a hundred acres of land and not subdivide it?
I think we um all agree that we have our worth cut out for us.
Mm-hmm.
And I would also say that um. If by October third, we're not ready. Then if by November twenty-first, we're not ready, that we have um points along the way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but I would be, I'm speaking in favor of the motion because I think that um. I think there's enough there to generate conversation and to solicit feedback. And I think that there's um. A decent amount of time between now and October third, and I feel really appreciative that Wendy, Eric, David, really all of us, Linda. Are gonna be heads down to get it to a much more final. That we all feel better about.
I feel good about that. I think I I would add to, you know, Jim's point that it is advisable and. Between the three of us plus Dave, we should be able to produce a one-to-two-page synopsis of what the plan is. Which is what most people will read, tells them here's the basic things you're looking at. Read further if you want, but this gets you what you need. And I've been advocating for that, I will continue to advocate for that because most people. If they can't watch fifteen-second TikTok, they sure as heck ain't gonna read through a three hundred-page book.
But does anybody wanna speak not in favor of the motion?
This is not, this is not not in favor of the motion, but but there's the the other process piece that we were with, that we had started started to talk about. Um, was involving the committees to a greater extent on volume two. And I know we didn't really dig into volume two tonight.
No, I have that under.
Other business, okay.
Okay. Okay, are we ready to vote? Okay, all those in favor of the motion as read, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Anyone abstaining? Okay, thank you. All right, so then I'm gonna skip reporting events unless somebody has something super urgent to share. Okay, and then go to other business, which I think relates to our concern about executive summary and so forth. So for other business, we have the farmer's market on August thirty-first. So I can work with Linda and David to produce some material for the table that functions as an executive summary. Could be a handout, could be a two-pager, submit your QR code on it, something to that effect. Um, we can use the same material to publish an article in Mountain Gazette. And if we have it written by the thirty-first, it can probably be on the seventh. Um, and then if there is anything else we wanna do, like an open house or on a Saturday morning or something here. Throwing it out there that between now and September nineteenth, we could potentially do something like that to help at a high level explain. The plan, I think addressing what Jim was just concerned about and also soliciting more feedback in a less formal way. For people who can't come to a hearing.
I think that'd be a great idea.
Yeah, I agree.
So I'll work with Linda on all of those things and probably come to some of you for volunteering, for writing the thing or staffing the table at the market. Or helping with an open house maybe here, or if anybody has another idea, like I said earlier, coffee, donuts, something to that effect.
Alan Bean.
Yeah, Alan Bean, everything. And I can ask you something, Linda, that you mentioned, and I don't know where it fits, so I apologize. Is the not like giving us the assignment to mine the qualitative feedback from the public?
Yes.
I wanna make sure that somehow that that was a brilliant idea. I'll make sure that we hold ourselves accountable to that.
Mm-hmm.
And I do love the idea of the, here's what we heard and here's what we're doing about it.
Mm-hmm.
Or we're not doing about it because, like, I think that sort of analysis is really important as feedback. As not just that here's what it is, but we heard you.
So I was gonna suggest that people pay a special attention to all that feedback in a day in preparation for the meeting on nine-five. And I think we have to think about how to best use the time on nine-five because we got through two chapters today. Probably, you know, do all the rest of them, maybe we decide to start our meeting earlier so we have more time, so we don't feel rushed. Maybe we decide to have an additional meeting.
May I suggest that we just have every one of the planning commission members who has gone through and read it. Prepare a quick summary so that all we have to do is go through point, 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 see where everyone's on the same page or not. Keep that up instead of go here now, have a big discussion, go to the next one.
I would respectfully disagree. I think that what what was so valuable was the depth of the conversation. And I can't believe that I would say this, I would rather be longer or have another meeting than than sacrifice. The depth that we were able to go to. And maybe that's, I, but that is just me in terms of the way I process.
I think I would rather have another meeting rather than a longer meeting.
Okay.
Um, and and I. I I found myself being informed by the discussion.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, me too. Yeah, I did, it was, it was very useful to me.
Yeah, okay, so.
Perhaps, if I may, suggest that a hybrid of at least take our notes. There's gonna be a bunch of things that check, 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 get those out. And then we can focus on what's important.
I, are we allowed to do that in advance?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because I, like, I pick my notes and they're all here. These are my actual notes. I would be more than happy to like do the same thing and send them to all of you ahead of time and then you could look at it and say, this one you should, that one is. It's meaty or I disagree or it's really something that requires discussion versus the check, check, check.
Mm-hmm.
So I know how we do that, but I'd be happy, I I like your hybrid.
All right, so that, so let's put that to the side just for a second because that's next meeting. So for other business, while working on organizing, you know, something that's more for the public and who's gonna help do that. And as Wendy was just saying, also pass each committee head to really dig into volume two. To provide feedback on volume two, like what's missing, what's outdated? Because I read a few sections of it and it does seem like it, you know, it's just not, it's it's does a good job of carrying forward, but it doesn't, it's not necessarily the current state. Um, but also some of what I was reading of that was really focusing on the future and less about the past and the current state. So deciding how much real estate in the document do we really wanna give to current state?
Hmm.
That's not that we need for context, but it's just, it could just revert to tape and stuff, you know? Um, so I was gonna ask Linda if she would invite each committee and then as you guys work through your liaison roles to help and encourage. The committees and to give them the deadline that David was saying of nine nineteen.
Yeah.
That we would get the committee feedback and then our editing team. Can do as much editing as possible in advance and then kind of hurry up at the end.
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Is there a way to get those committee chairs a document that they can actually edit? Versus a.
Yes.
A PDF.
Well, if you do the PDF and then add a comment into it, it works well. And that way we can see the comments rather than having to cross out and rewrite.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I I I did that with this, but there's there are some things that it, for the sake of expediency that attract changes. If we're giving it to the a committee that has expertise in the chapter that they're reviewing. But I feel like they should just be able to edit it. And like, we'll see where the changes are. Right, but you know, when 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 the conservation commission reviews the chapter. I forget what it is, chapter two, like, I trust them. Like, they're in a better position to make edits than I am, you know, on that chapter, same with housing.
Mm-hmm.
Could have come a word.
We could work that out with David to see. I mean, we might need to like strip out a lot of formatting so that. This minute somebody edits something, it doesn't like, you know, blow the whole thing up.
Yeah, like, just strip out the graphics, like, they don't necess, and 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 volume two has fewer graphics than volume.
Just send the text.
Like pure text.
Something, yeah.
Okay. Um.
You can also track who commented on it and and the Superman can decide, or woman. Whether or not the the modification is accepted or not.
Right, exactly.
And let the artificial intelligence help you.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so then.
Lower barriers for their participation.
Yeah, yeah, okay. So for our next meeting, September fifth, is we're gonna continue working on the draft. And Linda was hoping that we would maybe have an update on the project for Corners to Riverside. And we would maybe start looking at um the Riverside Form-Based Code. And learning about what it is and what it isn't. After tonight, I'm kind of thinking that I don't know that we're gonna really be able to take that on and that we might wanna have all the time for the draft.
Mm-hmm.
Agreed, so.
I agree.
Um.
What we could do, though, is to reveal the form base, tell us, like, we'll reveal the form-based code for now, and make it just a village center code. Because the comments we heard were form-based code is preventing development from starting tomorrow morning. That we need the development. Maybe that's not an accurate assessment, but.
Yeah, that. No.
No.
That, that, I would suggest that it's not, um, it is absolutely a high priority to get that started. We all agree.
Yeah.
And somehow we need to find a way to finish up our work.
Right.
If we're gonna hold ourselves to the, to our maximum. Just the development sense, so.
And then the next meeting would be the hearing on nine nineteen. Also, I think the only topic is gonna be this, that will be the hearing and the draft, and maybe we'll have a little bit for other business. So that's the next meetings, okay? I mean, should we potentially say at the next meeting, well, this I think we need to have an extra meeting? Um, yeah, I'll probably work with Linda about that ahead of time and poll the group to see how many people can attend. I just looked at the calendar, the following Tuesday would be September twelfth. Um, and I could attend if it were on September twelfth. So if we have a forum, then, and if people are willing to have an extra meeting, I think that would be really great. And I think the town is lucky to have such a cursed planning commission. Uh, okay, do we need an executive session?
The only thing about the next Tuesday is that the housing committee meets.
Oh, there we are.
Just a space, hopefully, but we could work around that.
Okay, thank you for making.
Not a, not a, you're open slot.
Right.
Thursday's.
Okay. Alright, do we need an executive session? Do you have a motion to carry?
I don't, wait, hold on, Jim?
This is not public input, so why don't you close? I just wanna make a, a, a functional comment for you that I believe is sensitive to the community.
Okay, so I'm gonna make that motion adjourned, okay? Second, I made the motion.
Heidi and Sabina, all those in favor of the journey?
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much.